Are we ready to move forward?
Just one minute, Commissioner Sweeney is logging in.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell, we're ready now.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Okay. Commissioners, we're ready, so we're gonna move forward. Before we begin, do we have anybody signed up for public comment, just curiously?
No, we don't.
No, we don't. Okay, thank you. All right, so we're gonna start in a moment. I hope everybody is ready. Okidok. Good evening, it's time I call the order. Town of Emmettspur, town meeting for Monday, May seventeenth, 2021. Time is seven thirty-three PM. I'll ask everyone at this time, if they would, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
One nation, under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Terrific, okay. Okay, great. All right, thank you. So we turn to our items for tonight. We have future meetings scheduled. Oh, I'm sorry, just for curiosity's sake, sound check, am I coming through okay for the meeting?
Yes, can we turn it up a little bit, Amy? I'm having a hard time hearing him.
Sorry, okay, thank you. Okay, so. Future meetings. Planning Commission will meet on Monday, May twenty-fourth, 2021, at seven thirty PM. This meeting will occur via Zoom. The town council will meet next on June seventh, 2021, at seven thirty PM. This will be broadcast on channel ninety-nine and via Zoom. The town council will meet again potentially on June twenty-first, 2021, at seven thirty PM via channel ninety-nine and also through Zoom. Are there any other meetings to share at this time? No, okay, all right, we move on. We have no one at this time signed up for public comments. We don't have any administrative business items. So we turn to the consent agenda. My hope is to have approved by the board a trail day on May twenty-third from nine AM until one PM. That's Sunday coming up. So I guess, Mr. Sweeney, I would turn this over to you if you would seek action.
He needs consent for trail day on May twenty-third, nine AM to one PM.
So, Mr. Sweeney, I'm hoping you can run the the motion.
Okay.
Seek the motion.
I need a motion to accept the the trail day. Is that what you needed?
Yes, sir.
You made the motion?
I'll make the motion to accept the trail day as May twenty-third from nine AM to one PM.
I need a second.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner O'Donnell, seconded by Commissioner. Who was it? Mr. Burns, I couldn't hear who it was. All favor the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any ayes? Motion carries, five to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney, thank you, everybody. Okay, I turn now to our next items. At this time, I believe staff has an announce, sorry, two announcements at least to share with us. Ms. Willetts?
Yes, thank you, I just had two quick announcements. First, we'll be doing hydrant flushing beginning the week of May twenty-fourth. An alert will go out on Wednesday, Friday, and Sunday. To make sure everybody's aware, it'll be posted on the Facebook and website also. And then final, the second will be, the pool will be opening at full capacity on Memorial Day weekend, which is Saturday, the twenty-eighth. And we are again at hundred percent capacity, however, we are still required by Frederick County to have masks worn in the bathrooms and changing areas, and beginning tomorrow, we'll start selling season pool passes as well. Those are my announcements.
I Thank you very much.
I also Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
I also need a consent or a motion from the council to have the pool free for community day itself. We usually have it for community day.
That'll have to be, Commissioner Sweeney, that'll have to be an agenda item if we're gonna take a vote, so we'll
Can we put that on June then?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, sir. Mr. Davis?
I'm sorry, I just have one thing.
Yes, sir.
Can't we override the county executive since the governor has opened up the state?
We can, but I don't believe it's what's recommended.
By who? I mean, the state, the state of Maryland, the state health department's opened things up, and the county executive's been dragging her feet through this whole thing, and it's time that we we buck her and do what's right.
I believe the board would have to decide that.
But, Mr. Davis, if we were to do that, we would have to create it as an agenda item, as an action taken by the town. So we could consider that as an agenda item for the June seventh meeting. And we could take action at that point in time. I suspect, from what I'm seeing, in areas nearby, we'll probably see a change. I think, you know, you're making an interesting point that, you know, we're moving that way, and the state has already moved that way. So that's something we could add to the agenda, and we would, at the end of our meeting, set that agenda and vote on that agenda. So that's something that we can do in our June seven meeting.
I'm okay with that, thank you.
Okay, yes, sir. Okay, so moving forward. Any other specific items from the board or mayor at this time, not comments, but just specific items related to action? Okay, so. Hearing none, I'm moving forward. Okay, so we turn to our regularly scheduled agenda item, and this will be the presentation and review of the fiscal year 2022 town budget for our consideration. Now, to frame this. Typically, it's staff making the presentation. I believe we're gonna see a PowerPoint, some follow-up questions. I'm hoping staff will build in an opportunity for those questions as we move through this. And then we can, at the end, either choose to vote and accept this, or choose to vote and modify it, and then consider those modifications to be accepted. So I hope that adds clarity to process. Beyond that, I'll turn it over to staff for their budget presentation, please.
I'm gonna let Mr. Tabler start us off.
Thank you.
Good evening, good evening, everybody. We'd wanna welcome everyone tonight for the staff presentation of the fiscal year twenty-two proposed budget. Like Commissioner O'Donnell said, we're gonna have a PowerPoint presentation along, to go along with the budget book that was handed out to everyone the last town meeting. A quick background on the process of putting the budget together. The town manager and the mayor coordinated our efforts for staff to meet and go over each of the departments, where we went over each of the line items that are gonna be presented tonight. The budget books that were handed out to everyone, just to give you a little background of the setup, it's a similar type setup that we've had in prior years. If you look, if you have them in front of you, if you take a look at the table of contents, they're set up similar to prior years where we have fiscal year twenty-one budget listed as compared to the fiscal year twenty-two budget for each of the departments. One addition that we added this year was, at the very end of the budget book, there was an additional section that we will go over this year. And it has to do with the water and sewer capital improvement program. So when we get to that section, that is new, so that's a little bit different item this year that we will go over. We have gotten some questions from some of the commissioners since the last meeting, and Ms. Willetts and the mayor and myself have, I believe, have answered them. As we go through the budget for this year. I'd like to go through each of the funds, one by one, then at the end of each of the fund presentations, if we have any questions, we can take those at that time. So if you have your budget books in front of you. You also, I think, were given a packet that has the slideshow that we have as far as the PowerPoint presentation, and we have that here in the in the town office here that will go through each of the slides. Again, if you take a look at page three is the first set of information having to do with the fiscal year twenty-two budget. On page three, you have each of the departments of the general fund, the revenues and the expenses, and you can see the activity as compared to the prior year. As was mentioned in the last meeting, the as far as the taxes of the town, the real estate taxes are to remain the same, the current rate of thirty-six cents per a hundred dollars assessed for the real estate taxes. And kind of have number page three, page five, and page six available as you look at the different revenues that the town has budgeted. Couple items of note concerning the revenues is that the county tax equity funding is actually lower this year by about eighty-three hundred dollars. Also, the state highway funds are ten, about ten thousand dollars higher than they were the prior year. So we've had, some of the line items have increased, but some have decreased, which is not as usual for for a given year. In the, on page three, as you look at the different sections, you have the different departments listed there with the different changes that are done to each. For example, under taxes, that's went up by almost thirty thousand dollars. That's that's, some of the line items have went up, as you can see on the page five. As you go down, you can see each of the line items, but as you look at the revenues. Many have, are very similar areas that have increased are the real estate taxes and the local income taxes. As you look at page five. Many of the items have stayed the same. Like I said, state highway use is up by about ten thousand. One thing that that is down for this given year is the county tax equity. Many of the, some of these line items are estimated, some are actually notices from the county and the state, and the county tax equity is one of the items that is gonna be lower this year. So that's
One of the things that we would
Number.
Sorry, Cole.
Go ahead.
One thing to note, and it's not shown in your budget. Looking at revenues, although we're projecting an increase from what we budgeted in fiscal year twenty-one at revenues of one million nine hundred and seven thousand, looking back at audited at previous audited years. We'd have to go back all the way to audited twenty-eighteen at one million seven. After that, audited nineteen was mil, one million nine hundred and sixty, fiscal year twenty was one million nine hundred and thirty, audited fiscal year twenty is two million one hundred and seventy. We budgeted last year one million eight for revenues. So although we see a slight increase from what we budgeted for last year, we are still far behind what was audited in the previous three years for eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, and this is obviously a direct impact of COVID on our revenues. It's just something to note.
So a couple of the areas in the revenues. The tax section is up, the state revenue is up slightly, but we have some areas that are lower, like the accounting tax equity. Service charges are budgeted to be slightly up, and our miscellaneous revenues are slightly budgeted to be a little higher. Overall, it's a two percent budget increase from last year. So we'll start taking a look at the of the presentation. Again, taking a look at fiscal year twenty-one, total revenue budgeted was a million eight seventy with all the different categories. Fiscal year twenty-two budget is two percent higher at a million nine oh seven, and those are your different breakdowns in different areas. Like I say, the real estate taxes are a major item in the taxes section of the budget, and we have increased the taxes that we anticipate by about twenty thousand. On the revenue side of things, we try to be conservative as far as how much the town will actually receive. So that hopefully, when amounts may be larger during the year, we would have additional amounts that we'd possibly put towards the capital projects fund.
Can I have, can I ask a question? With the, with the selling on the new lots and the new house, new homes that are being built, that adds to our tax base?
That that actually affects. It affects the capital project budget slightly, but it's it's booked as tap fees under the water and sewer.
Right.
Those are very helpful, and we'll see that in fund four and five in the water and sewer. Here's a chart that just gives you an idea of the activity of last several years of the general fund revenue. Fiscal year twenty-one and twenty-two, there's a slight difference that we have in the budget. Here's a slide that Kathy was talking about a little earlier, the impact of revenue that we've had the last couple of years. We have the, for fiscal year twenty-one, the million eight, and then fiscal year twenty-two, we have a million nine budget. That amount for fiscal year twenty is the actual four that was audited that we received, and that's an example of hopefully that revenues come in a little higher than we may have originally budgeted. This chart is just an overall, as we get into the expenses for the general fund. Fiscal year twenty-one and twenty-two are basically even because obviously the budgets, we budget the expenses to match the revenues, which are required required to do. So overall, for revenues, we're at a million nine oh seven oh eighty-six, which you can see on page six. Now we'll just transition into the departments themselves that we have. Those are, start on page eight, which is Department Ten Legislative and Executive, and you can see each page beyond that are the different departments we have for the general fund. And we have some slides that we wanna just highlight some things in the general fund that we'll show coming up here. All these pages, page eight, with all the different departments tie back to the summary page, so you can see the detail. For example, page eight is the Legislative Department. If you look back at page three, you'll see that the fiscal year twenty-two budget matches up with the total expense that's listed in that column, the one thirty-seven, one ninety-two. And you have all the different line items that go into the budget, and those are what we set down with each of the, each each of the staff to go over one by one to see where we wanna set the budget going forward. But I won't go through each of the departments line by line, but we just wanna emphasize some of the things that are in the different departments. I'll kind of, I'll pass this on to Kathy, or let me, actually, I'll do, let me do this, and you do the detailed ones. Overall, the general fund expenses for fiscal year twenty-one, we're at a million eight seventy, and those are all your different departments. This slide matches up with all the amounts that are in the pages for each of the individual departments in the general fund.
That slide's what, fiscal fiscal year twenty-one?
Correct.
And then
The next slide is fiscal year twenty-two, that's the million nine oh seven oh eighty-six. Which matches up with page three summary with all the different departments. You can see all the different departments there listed in the amounts that tie to each of those departments. Okay, now we'll start getting into the specific detailed items, and I'll let Kathy talk about those.
So we just pulled out, in each department, you'll see, we'll pull out, we pulled out a couple of different line items to show you what made up each line item. After we go through this, if you have specific questions about a line item that we didn't talk about, I have the detail here, and I can explain what went into each line item. So in special events under legislative, you'll see that we'll go down, Christmas decorations, two thousand dollars was budgeted for Christmas decorations this year. This is to put on North Seton Avenue, bows and garland. We're working on getting permission from Tom McEdison to attach these to their poles. We do not have any electric capability out there, so we can't get any light-up displays at this time. A hundred dollars for the Maryland Heritage, so MHAA ribbon cutting, five thousand for the Boys and Girls Club. Four hundred and fifty for the house decorating award money at Christmas, have hundred and seventy-five for the Christmas decorating judges, two thousand for general other events, and two thousand for National Night Out, and four hundred dollars for a shred day. And so that would make up that line item at twelve thousand one hundred and twenty-five.
Is is community day part of that?
No. You mean for the fireworks deck donation?
Yeah.
Yeah, no.
Moving on to the next slide. This is actually in Department Twenty.
So, for Department Twenty, for the police
Ms. Willetts, we're having a hard time hearing you.
Let's keep muting myself. For the sheriff's office contract, we just received the contract for fiscal year fiscal year twenty-two. We originally budgeted two hundred and seventy-five thousand based on what we had spent this year to date. However, their contract that I just received increased by eight and a half percent for a total of two hundred and ninety-eight thousand and twenty-two dollars. Which is a twenty-three thousand, approximately twenty-three thousand dollar increase. So we'll have to adjust Department Twenty. And then the numbers will change going forward for other line items, but that's where we are with the contract, two hundred and ninety-eight thousand. We will bring this to you for approval at either the June seventh or the June twenty-first meeting.
Mr. President, can I ask a question about that?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Ms. Willetts. Obviously, when we're, we're starting to plan ahead and think ahead and things of that nature with with the possibility of substantial growth in town, how is that going to affect that contract in the next two to three years if we say, you know, add additional two hundred, three hundred homes that are being projected right now? Is that gonna be a huge line item that's gonna have, that we're gonna have to
If I heard you correctly, um, so the line item would
Mr. Burns, you're breaking up. If this continues, you might wanna shoot it into the chat.
So if I heard him correctly, he's asking if if Department Twenty is gonna increase significantly with the growth in town, and that would be determined if if there would be a need to extend the contract to a third deputy. I would anticipate, you know, the line items, if we didn't even do that, some of the line items would increase slightly. But if you look at it, at two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, it's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per deputy, which would make our contract upwards of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If we were to add a third deputy, and that's just me guessing, it all depends on who that third deputy would be, because it's not only based on their pay, it's based on their health insurance, their retirement benefits. One of the big increases is also the, their fleet fuel increase this year. So it is gonna continue to trend upwards, I believe. If that answers your question.
Yes, it answers the question. I was just, you know, as we continue to talk about growth in town. You know, I think that's something we're obviously gonna have to think about long-term as well.
Correct.
Okay, moving on to the next slide, we're gonna take a, we're gonna get into Department Thirty, and there's some different line items that we wanna show for that.
All right, looking at Department Thirty. We highlight just a couple of different areas. We highlighted contractual in Department Thirty, which is streets, and we've budgeted nineteen thousand five hundred, which is what we budgeted in fiscal year twenty-one. Twelve thousand for snow removal. Which we are gonna come in under that budget for this fiscal year, a seven thousand dollar base, plus about five hundred dollars for human resources. And then the next line item would be your other expenses. Which you'll see in fiscal year twenty-one, we budgeted thirty-three hundred. This year, we are budgeting budgeting seventeen hundred, and the big difference would be we have moved storm drain inlets into Fund Two under Storm Water Management. So here we have a hundred dollars for meter repairs, six hundred dollars for safety, and a hundred dollars in general. Moving on to operating supplies under streets, we have budgeted eleven thousand one hundred, which is a five thousand dollar difference from fiscal year twenty-one. Fiscal year twenty-one, we budgeted five thousand for no parking bags for the parking meters, so we did not need to budget that for this year. We have five hundred dollars in equipment, eight hundred dollars in parking enforcement, three hundred, or three thousand in salt, a thousand in tools, fifteen hundred in cold mix, a thousand dollars in signs, a thousand dollars in paint, a thousand dollars in stone, and thirteen hundred in general. As Cole noted, and I wanted to make this clear, we meet many times with our department heads, and these numbers come directly from the department heads talent based off of what their needs are and what they anticipate their needs will be in fiscal year twenty-two. Plus, we look at what we have spent in previous years, and that's how we come up with these numbers. And that's how we come up with these numbers.
I would, I would agree with Kathy on that. We, we definitely, we take a quick look, we take a careful look at the. At where we are year to date, we, we meet quarterly to, to look at where we are year to date. And we want to, we get with the staff and make sure that we know what may occur by the end of the fiscal year. And what will be as part of next fiscal year. So we, we, we take a careful study of everything.
Moving on to, again, in public work streets, repairs and maintenance. This year we budgeted four thousand one hundred and fifty, which is slightly up from fiscal year twenty-one, which was at three thousand nine hundred. We budgeted a thousand for sidewalks, two thousand for parking enforcement, four hundred for contingency and seven hundred and fifty in general.
So overall for streets, streets are up about twenty-nine thousand dollars over last year's budget. Or a seven percent increase. Moving on to the refuge department. Quick question, hi, just. Go ahead. As we're moving and thank you, as we're moving forward on replacing pipes. Water service and wastewater and such. Is this where we would see funding for those repairs, the street repairs? Sorry.
No, you'll see for minor street repairs, you would see that, but typically when we do. Repairs, we make our water line or sewer line repairs. And if we have to come in and cold patch or we have, if we just like spot patching, it'll come out of here. Otherwise it comes out of fun too for your curbs, streets, gutters, sidewalks, paving.
Thank you. I just want to make sure we were setting aside for that too. Okay, thank you. So all the detail for department thirty, public work streets is on page thirteen. Moving on to the next department, department thirty-one refuge, that is up by about nine thousand dollars. Over the prior year's budget and that's basically, I believe the, the contract. For the refuge companies increased this coming fiscal year. And we budgeted a lot of the, the contractual line items by about five percent to increase to, to cover that expense.
Correct. The, the contract for refutes, refuse, excuse me, went only, went up only about five percent. This year.
So.
And it is a three-year contract, Maddie, three years, yeah, trash contract is three years.
So hopefully that line item will be steady for the next three years.
Right.
Moving on to the next department on page fifteen is department sixty parks. Parks has a slight increase this year of about two thousand dollars or one percent. And we have a couple of line, we have a couple of line items we want to highlight within that department.
All right, first line item would be apartment sixty parks would be your operating supplies. Operating supplies went up roughly about five hundred dollars. We budgeted a hundred dollars for the pool, a hundred dollars for our park buildings, seven hundred and fifty dollars for the dog park. A thousand for signs and one thousand six hundred and fifteen dollars in general. We are purchasing for pet waste station trash cans, the replacements for our current pet waste stations. That are located in our parks. Repairs and maintenance, repairs and maintenance for the parks was reduced slightly about, about fifteen hundred. We budgeted a thousand for the grounds, twelve hundred for equipment, five thousand for the pool. Fifteen hundred for the upkeep, upkeep of the park buildings, four thousand for our ball fields. Forty-three hundred for our playgrounds, eighteen hundred of that is the maintenance for the sun shades. At the ADA playground, seven hundred and fifty for the dog park, a thousand for contingency and three thousand for general. A thousand dollars is dedicated to ash tree treatments. It's a program that we do each year to protect our ash trees. Special events and program costs in department sixty is down about two thousand dollars. We've budgeted seven hundred and eighty-five for the farmer's market. Two thousand dollars for three pool parties. And then four thousand seven hundred and twenty for community functions. In there you find the turkey trot. Arbor Day and Green Fest. We also budget a hundred dollars for the community garden and five hundred in general.
So overall, department sixty up about one percent overall. You can see different line items are slightly up or slightly down. So that's where that is for department sixty. If you go to the next page on page sixteen. Department seventy is the debt service for the, for the general fund. We don't have a slide for that, but you can see on page three. Last year we had about fifteen thousand dollars worth of expense. I'm glad to say this year we'll have, this coming year will have zero as far as expense because we paid off our final loan in the general fund. When I started working here for the town about six or seven years ago, we had about ten loans outstanding. Ten or eleven loans outstanding, we're now down to about five or six. So we're, we're paying off different loans that we've had over the years. Many of them are fifteen, twenty-year loans. So it's nice to see those type of line items go down to zero for the coming years. And those are fixed expenses that you have year to year. Department seventy-five on page sixteen. Originally the amount was a hundred and fifty thousand four fifty-two. That enter fund transfer amount is all the revenue that we anticipate. Minus all the department expenses we anticipate. This is in essence, the excess of the general fund that we. Normally allocate to fund two. But since we found out that the contract for the police services was going to be higher than we anticipated. This would have to be modified by that amount. So I'll let Kathy talk a little bit about the, the capital projects fund two.
Do you want to move on to that or do you want to take questions for fun one?
Yeah, we can take questions, certainly. Does anyone have any questions in particular for fun one concerning the revenues or the expenses? For any of the line items?
Hi there, just real quick, I, I, I did ask a lot of questions. Prior to, and they were pretty general questions, I think, not even for transparency sake, I'm not going to repeat all those here. So I, I have nothing at this time. I need some further explanation though. I think we tie on something regarding the capital projects. Budget, but I'm, I'm good to go regarding the general fund.
Does anyone else have any questions concerning the general fund at this time?
It doesn't sound like it.
Hearing none, we'll move on to the capital projects fund. Again, originally the budget was about a hundred and fifty thousand to be transferred to fund two. I guess we anticipate now it will change to about a hundred and twenty-five thousand, but we can go over the information we have currently. And then we'll have to make modifications at some point.
Right.
And we're looking at pages eighteen and nineteen, is that correct? That's correct. And let me explain pages eighteen and nineteen. The first column is the fiscal year twenty-one current balance. That is all the activity as of when we've passed out the budget books. Those are the current balances from prior years and this current year's activities. These are the balances in each of those sections. The second column is the proposed budget that would add to the balances. And that third column is the amount that it would be if the budget. Was approved for those specific areas.
So as, as Cole mentioned. Once we set, once we figure out what our budgeted revenues are and then our budgeted expenses. We came up with an excess revenue of a hundred and fifty thousand four hundred and fifty-two thousand. To be transferred to capital projects. I initially had, I initially had requests of two hundred and seventy-eight thousand. From staff requested to be moved to fund two with this fiscal year. Unfortunately, as you can see, we only had a hundred and fifty thousand, so we had to pare it down. To what we felt was the most important projects to accomplish in fiscal year twenty-two. With that being said, I'll go over what we had budgeted for in these capital project transfers. Unfortunately, we'll, we'll have to go back to the drawing board with the change in the sheriff's office contract. A hundred and fifty thousand four hundred and fifty-two, it looks like it'll be knocked down to roughly a hundred and twenty-seven thousand. To be able to be moved to fund two, but what we had come up with is fifty thousand for. Fund two department twelve, which is for storm water management, which was for an impact study. I pull my notes out and I can go over that in more detail after I go through these. Fun two in the planning for general was the engineering fees related to the ADA. Ramp project, which we received grant monies in the amount of six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars approximately. The fifteen thousand would be the town's contribution towards engineering. As we continue to build our, or build our walking trail in town. Our wayside exhibit match is ten thousand one hundred and twenty-five, and this is on point with what we have set aside each year. For our wayside exhibits. For the town office, we are budgeting seven thousand one hundred for two new copy machines. Right now we're having technicians come in about once a month, make repairs to the copiers. We do not have the capability except for a very few small printers to print in color. So we were having to outsource a lot of it to vendors, which is. And spending a lot of money on ink. We, as usual, we set aside forty-five thousand for paving and forty thousand for vehicles. Five thousand thirty-two for our message centers, which would be. You notice at the top of community park, the old wooden rickety. Sign that has like, like a bulletin board. These would be four new signs. Two would go in a community park, one boat, one would go in Rainbow Lake, one would go in Memorial Park. We tried to get a grant for it and we were turned down. And then fifteen hundred for just additional maintenance in the general department, fund two in parks. That's what we were looking at to do with the capital projects. However, I'll have to go back and look at the monies that's currently in capital projects to see what can be moved. So that we can still cover what we believe are the priority items. We were transferring two thousand six hundred and forty-nine from Jameson North School and West North. And two, twenty-five thousand three hundred in impact fees and that was going to paving. So your impact fees are what you receive, we receive twelve hundred for each new home. That's being built in town, one thousand of that is for impact fees and fund two. Two hundred goes directly to the emergency warning siren. And in our code, impact fees must be used for. Roads, paving, sidewalks, and I believe parks. It's very specific. So we were moving that to cover paving for this year.
Commissioner Sweeney, that goes back to your question that you had concerning the, the fees that they pay on the new houses. A portion comes, goes into this fund two as impact fees. And then you'll see when we go over water and sewer, the tap fees that go directly to the water and sewer funds.
Zach, I believe is on the call. If anybody was looking for some more information related to the storm water impact study. If anybody wanted information at that time, he could better explain it than I can. If anybody's interested.
Does anyone have any questions concerning the fun to transfer information that we've went over this evening?
If, I have one, if we sell more homes this year without money, impact fees will go towards. I'm offsetting some of the calls to capital projects.
Right. So any impact fees we would get this year would be logged into fund two. And then they could be transferred to your sidewalks and roads or your parks. Those are the two designated areas.
Do we, we anticipate selling some more homes this year?
Yes, as you'll see, when we get to the water and sewer fund, we've budgeted for ten. That's being very conservative for this upcoming fiscal year. We believe it's going to be upwards of twenty, but with development, you just, we'd rather be on the conservative side.
Understand.
Correct. So, so that's, that's the information concerning fun two. Moving on to the water and sewer funds.
I'm sorry, I, I had a general question slash comment regarding the capital project.
Commissioner Ritz, go ahead.
Sure, sure. It was just regarding, my one question was tied to. A line item on here specifically under department fifteen, the up county building. From what I understand, we're, we're maintaining the current balance of. Little over fifty-one thousand dollars for potential maintenance and repairs to that building. And that's my, and my understanding too is that the town owns that building outright. There is no lien on that property, correct?
That's correct. The up county is, is in need of a roof. And so we would like to keep that monies there. There's some discussions whether or not the, the rental, the renter is going to pay for the roof or the town will. Not knowing the future of the building at this point. So that's why that money was left there and not transferred out. Because if we do have to pay for the roof.
Okay, well, if it's our building though, wouldn't we be responsible for that roof?
Not necessarily.
I guess where I'm going with all this is, you know, in the future, since we do own that building and we have a tenant. Whose rent is less than half of what we're going to anticipate for a new roof. Maybe we should start considering selling that building like we did with one forty South Seton.
We are, we are waiting for the renter to make a decision. The current lease expires. October of twenty twenty-two, I believe. I just, I think I answered that in your email. I don't remember the date off the top of my head. So we're, we're, we're in the process of having discussions with him, the mayor is and staff.
Okay, that's the piece of the.
Yeah, we'll certainly keep the board apprised. Right now there is no movement on it. We're waiting on. The appraisal and then the renter to make a decision what exactly he wants to do.
All right, good news. Good to hear. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions concerning fun two? Hearing none, we'll, we'll move on to a fun four and fun five. There are business funds that the town has. If you turn to page twenty-two of your notebook, it gives you a summary of the revenues and expenses. Of the water and sewer funds. Looking at the water fund, which is department forty or fund four. That starts on page twenty-four. As you look at the revenues, the fiscal year twenty-one budget was five hundred and sixty-eight thousand roughly. The fiscal year twenty-two budget is actually slightly lower at five hundred and sixty-two thousand compared to five sixty-eight from the prior year. And looking at the slide that represents that. Showing that water revenues last few years has been pretty consistent. Kind of a flat line from prior year. So one of the areas that we want to emphasize is the line item of the utility charges. We're anticipating receiving less this year than the prior year, just based on where we were year to date. And what may come as far as being conservative for the, for the, for the coming year. A big reason for that is a couple of our larger. Customers or accounts in town. Their metered water has actually been lower. So we have received less revenues. And that can be directly tied to less staffing at those locations and less water. at those locations and less water use. So those are reflected in the fiscal year twenty-two budget line items. So water expenses are reflected in this slide. Overall, the water expenses last year were budgeted at six hundred and thirty-three, six hundred and thirty-seven thousand as compared to this year, a little over seven hundred thousand. Here's a slide that reflects the revenues versus expenses as far as the water fund. And as you can see, the last couple of years, the expenses have outpaced the revenues that we've received within the water fund. Looking at the individual, some of the individual line items within the water fund. We wanted just to point out a few of those and kind of give some background on that.
All right, we'll start with contractual under underwater. So underwater for contractual, we budgeted forty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars, which is about a nine thousand dollar increase from fiscal twenty-one. This year, we budgeted seven thousand for the lab, nine thousand for leak detection, twenty thousand, one hundred and fifty for algae control. The contract itself is ten thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. There's an additional charge this year only for seven thousand, five hundred for upgrade on the satellite and two thousand for the yearly communication. And then we budget thirteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-three in general. Two thousand, eight hundred and fifty of that is Rainbow Lake, the mowing of it, ten thousand, three hundred is the base. And then miscellaneous HR makes up the difference for forty-nine thousand, three hundred and seventy-three, excuse me. For operating supplies, underwater, we budgeted eight, eighty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty in operating supplies. It's a slight increase of about four thousand dollars from fiscal year twenty-one to twenty-two. This year, we budgeted five hundred dollars for equipment, five thousand, five hundred for lines and piping. For the water plant itself, we budgeted twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty. Two thousand of that is a base. We're going to spend eleven thousand for reagent, reagentless chlorine analyzers, fifteen hundred for a butterfly valve rebuild kit, eight hundred and fifty to replace the backwash filter valves and fifteen hundred for two electric actuators. Then we have three thousand for the lab, twelve thousand, five hundred for the mount, water we purchased from the mount, fifty-five hundred for tools and twenty-five thousand to replace a hundred meters and eighteen hundred for general. Last year, the board approved, I just wanted to note this, board approved five thousand for the pH probe. That has made a world of difference at the, the treatment process at the plant. It's going to lead to a reduction, we hope, in the amount of soda ash that we'll have to use going forward. If, if you ever get a chance to take a tour up there at the plant to see some of the items that you guys have approved with the budget and the improvements that we have made up there, it's, it's excellent. If you ever get a chance, please, please stop up. And Department Forty, chemicals underwater, we kept it the same. However, we do, we do believe that we will see some reduction. We budgeted twenty-five hundred for chlorine, seventeen thousand, five hundred for soda, soda ash, seven thousand, four fifty for the Dell pack, four thousand, two hundred and fifty for the DE and five hundred in general. So the, it's exactly the same from what we budgeted in twenty-one to what we budgeted in twenty-two.
Kathy, I just want to step back for a second. I got ahead of my, got ahead of myself here. If you look at page twenty-four, just to go back to revenues within the water, each of the line items there, a couple of things I just wanted to emphasize on page twenty-four, total revenues, as you can see, is slightly down to about five hundred and sixty-two thousand compared to the prior year, five sixty-eight. Couple line items I wanted to just show and highlight were under utility charges, forty-four, thirty-one. That's where we're budgeting fifty thousand dollars less from, from Water and Sewer Billing. Under account forty-four, thirty-six, tap fees, the eighty-two thousand dollars there is based on the, the ten homes that were budgeting for the coming fiscal year. So that's the other side. The tap fees that are paid by the builders, a small portion goes into Fund Two. And then the remainder goes into Fund Forty or Fund, Department Forty and Department Fifty. The tap fees here at eighty-two thousand, which are higher than last year. You can see those in that line item. And then also under miscellaneous revenue for water, there's about twenty thousand dollars that have been, that had, that has been budgeted there. I think that's the forestry activity that we have budgeted for the coming year and that will be booked under miscellaneous revenue. So you can see that some of the line items are lower than last year's budget, but tap fees, miscellaneous revenues help us get back to just about where we were for the prior year. So I just wanted to go over that before we finished all the expenses. Sorry to be jumping around like this, but you think of things as you go through things.
So this chart just basically shows where we spend our money related to chemical costs. As you can see, we've stayed pretty even each year going forward. The most that we spend is in soda, soda ash, and that is what helps to control the pH of the water at the treatment plant. Here shows you the dramatic decrease, I say dramatic is about the dramatic decrease in chemical costs since the town approved the LG Sonic Control System at the lake. It has been remarkable help, helping, helping to control the algae even through last year or, yeah, last year's summer during our drought when the algae was in full force. We've been able to stay pretty even with our chemicals. In audited twenty, in fiscal year twenty, audited was twenty-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-two. We don't have the audited numbers for twenty-one yet. And we're expecting to be pretty much the same going into this year. And here's the water savings. Basically, this is the backwash that, backwash water that's been saved due to the, the LG Sonic. As you know, since it controls the algae coming into the treatment process, the wear and tear for the backwash has been lessened because of it. We've gone from about one point or one, one, one point two eight four down to midway of this year, January through April at point six nine three. So we're doing pretty good on saving on backwash. And once the clarifier is built, you're going to see that number reduce as well. Continue to save water. Water saving summary, basically, we just did for the first January of twenty twenty-one through April of twenty-one. So we're only, what, a little over a quarter of the way through twenty twenty-one. You'll see the water savings that I talked about prior was about one point two eight four million. Currently, we're using six hundred and ninety-three thousand. If you divide that out by thirty and a half days, it's roughly two hundred or, yeah, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-one gallons per day. You divide that out by the state requirement of two hundred and fifty gallons per day. On any given day, we're, we're saving upwards of ninety taps. So we just kind of want to keep updating you on what the LG Sonic is doing and how important it has been to our water, or our water treatment process. Repairs and maintenance for water. It's gone down about a little under three thousand. We've budgeted two thousand for our mental, mountain rental property. A five hundred for equipment, twelve thousand, five hundred for the distribution and collection lines at the water treatment plant, nineteen thousand for the storage tank. Our annual contract is about seventeen thousand, four hundred. We budgeted five thousand for the wells. We do need to replace one of the pumps this year. Five hundred at the lab, seven hundred and fifty for contingency and seven hundred and fifty for general. For a total of fifty-eight thousand, four hundred. Looking at some of the tentative infrastructure projects for fiscal year twenty-two, we are in the beginning stages of the DePaul Street Waterline and the North Seaton Avenue Waterline. We're currently working with our contractor to do the preliminary environmental report and the preliminary engineering or the engineering report, environmental report and preliminary engineering report on both projects. Once those are completed and approved for USDA, from USDA, then we'll be able to submit for funding. One of the necessary projects is a, a computer upgrade at the water treatment plant. These are asset projects, so you don't see them actually in your budget. They are paid for as a cash item. And if you have questions about that, Cole can explain that a little bit better. That's budgeted at about twelve thousand dollars. And then our water clarifier estimated at one point four million. We are in the beginning stages of that. The contractor has, working on the design. We anticipate receiving one million from the state any day now, and the town will need to contribute about four hundred thousand out of pocket for the water clarifier. Again, that is going to help immensely with all the backwashes. It will ease the wear and tear on our equipment. And hopefully that, once they begin construction, I think, Maddie, what was it, nine months, six, nine months for completion? Oh, sorry. For future with timeframes, talking to staff, we anticipate moving forward with needing a West Main Street water line replacement in the next three to five years. The Waynesboro Pike Water Line needs to be replaced. However, there's some other issues surrounding that since it is out of the town limits. That should be worked towards being replaced within the next three to five years. And we anticipate with all the future development, the Emmett Gardens Water Treatment Plant will need to be either in place or begin construction within the next five years. As you'll see at the back, as Cole mentioned, the Water Sewer Capital Improvement Program. This is something that we started that is required by a lot of grant funding, USDA, MDE and other avenues. They require you to have an allocation moving forward. So this is something that we're going to continue to work towards.
That's a review of Department Forty. Does anyone have any questions concerning the Department Forty Water at this time?
Just a, a general comment. Thank you for doing this. The the concern I have is as we move to the update of the wastewater treatment plant computer system is its integrity related to hacks. On the wastewater side, you know, it's, it's less hindering to the town other than, you know, penalties from the state. But are we looking at or have we had an upgrade at the water treatment plant on the mountain?
Yeah, that's what this, if you go back one call, one or two, where the wastewater or the water treatment digital upgrade, the twelve thousand dollars.
Yes, okay.
That's upgrading our computer system for the water plant. And you'll see when we get to sewer, there's also a project related to the wastewater treatment plant.
Okay, so for security purposes, as part of that upgrade, securing it from outside hacking.
I actually have the estimates sitting on my desk. I, I have to double check what exactly is entailed in this upgrade. As far as our system is concerned out there, we've been upgrading it over the last couple of years. And our system out there at the water plant and will be at the wastewater treatment plant is very secure. That's, that's not a concern of ours at the water plant. And as you'll see at the wastewater treatment plant, we, we have a proposal for you. So we are good at the water plant.
Great. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Any more questions concerning Department Forty? Hearing none, I'll move on, we'll move on to the Sewer Fund. That's Department Fifty. That begins on page twenty-seven. And first, looking at the sewer revenue, sewer revenue is budgeted lower this year as compared to last. Budget last year was a million, seventy-nine thousand. This year, it's a million, twenty-eight thousand. Again, along with, if you take a look at the line item, utility charges, forty-four, thirty-one, we're actually estimating about seventy-five thousand dollars less in utility charges for the sewer department. So lower usage has a, an effect on water. That same lower effect has an even bigger effect on sewer because of how the rate structure is. So that's one thing we wanted to point out. Also, again, on line item forty-four, thirty-six, the tap fees, the eighty thousand dollars there are the ten houses that are estimated this year. Hopefully, they'll, they'll be more than that. So that can add right to the amount of revenue that we have within the sewer department. The slide for sewer revenue, you can see the leveling out of the sewer revenue. That big point around fiscal year fourteen is when we were building the wastewater treatment plant. We got a lot of federal revenue and some state revenue to build the plant. So we had, we booked that at that time. So that's a, that's an unusual occurrence. And you can see that the remaining years are just about right at a little over a million dollars. Sewer expenses for Department Fifty. Last year, they were budgeted at eight hundred and twelve thousand. This year, they're roughly about eight hundred and fifty thousand. You can see the slight uptick from fiscal year twenty-one to twenty-two. And we'll go through some of the line items that make up the, all the sewer expenses. This is a comparison of the revenues versus expenses. As you can see, fiscal year twenty-two, we're actually, for the sewer side of things, we have a little bit of a positive revenues over expenses. Whereas in water, we usually are a little bit below the revenue. In sewer, many times, we're a little bit over. So combined, they typically are right about, come out to right about even. So I'm kind of looking at those both together. Some of the line items within the sewer, we'll go over and kind of give you a breakdown of what each, would make up, what makes up each of the line items.
All right, we'll start with contractual and sewer. It's only a slight increase of about six hundred and fifty from fiscal year twenty-one to fiscal year twenty-two. We budgeted fifty-eight thousand, three hundred under contractual. And five hundred, that is directly related to the wastewater treatment plant. Twelve hundred for the pump station, fifteen hundred dollars for sludge, sludge testing, eighteen thousand, five hundred for sludge removal, thirty thousand for the lab, and then sixty-six thousand, six hundred for general, five thousand base and roughly fifteen hundred for HR. In operating supplies, we budgeted twenty-five thousand, four hundred and fifty, which is about a decrease of three hundred from fiscal year twenty-one. We have five hundred in equipment, sixteen thousand, eight hundred for the plant itself, two thousand for mechanical seals, a thousand for a chem scan pump, twenty-five hundred for four biolact valve circuit boards, fifty-two hundred for twenty complete quartz sleeves, ten bulbs and two ballast cards, six hundred dollars for a digester pipe upgrade, five hundred for UPS batteries and seven thousand for four airlift assemblies for the sand filters, seven hundred and fifty for the pump station, five thousand, four hundred for the lab, a thousand for tools and a thousand for general. Related to chemicals, we've budgeted fifty-one thousand, six hundred, a slight decrease of about Related to chemicals, we've budgeted fifty one thousand six hundred, slight decrease of about three thousand five hundred. We budget five hundred for the lagoons, eighteen thousand six for the alum, six thousand for caustic. Seventeen thousand for methanol, three thousand from chlorine, six thousand for polymer, five hundred for general. Repairs and maintenance related to sewer, we've decreased about by eight thousand. We have a thousand for equipment, twenty seven thousand for the wastewater treatment plant itself. Twenty thousand of that is base, six thousand is budgeted for tech visits and a thousand for meter calibration. Ten thousand for the pump station, two thousand five hundred for the lagoon, one of the liners needs to be repaired. Two thousand five hundred for the distribution and collection line, seven fifty for the lab, a thousand for contingency and a thousand for general. For a total of forty five thousand seven hundred and fifty. Some tentative infrastructures for fiscal year twenty two. Again, we will budget for sewer relining this in fiscal year twenty two, we will be doing Emmett Gardens. As typically we do that about January or February, we'll budget a hundred thousand dollars for that. The Creamery Road Pump Station, they just completed the stormwater concept plan for that. And then they should be submitting their improvements or their plan for the stormwater management. To the town in the near future. Just as a reminder, the total project is about three million six hundred and fifty seven thousand. We received a loan from USDA in the amount of one million nine hundred and eighty thousand. We will receive a grant in eight, in the amount of eight hundred and sixty three thousand. The town's required portion is eight hundred and seven thousand. For this project, the town has to exhaust. All of its contribution before you can draw on the loan. And then once the loan is exhausted, then we can move to the grant. The town is also going to budget for a recycle pump at the wastewater treatment plant for thirteen thousand. Seven thousand five hundred for an influent composite sampler. The monitoring system is what we just talked about for the wastewater treatment plant for eighty thousand eight hundred. However, we were just, Ms. Shaw was just notified by USDA that they have additional grant fundings available for certain. Public works projects. So we will be submitting for grant funding for this monitoring system. I believe there's a fifty five percent match, fifty percent match. They will, USDA will fund up to fifty five percent, which would be a huge savings for the town. And then the multipurpose vehicle for water and sewer at forty eight thousand, we will also be submitting for that. For grant funding through USDA. And then we'll continue, any future, future capital improvement projects for sewer. Will be the continuation of sewer relining, the location to be term, to be determined by next fiscal year.
Question regarding the multipurpose vehicle, are we just talking about a standard like pickup truck with utility boxes? Or is there something actually specific to the wastewater treatment plant?
No, it's to replace, we have currently the wastewater treatment plant and well, water and sewer, they use a thirty year old John Deere. For their mower and their front end loader, and it's to replace that vehicle. For all their jobs related to water and sewer. And hopefully, like I said, we will be able to. Obtain the grant from USDA, which will cover up to fifty five percent of this as well.
That's terrific. Okay, thank you. Thanks for clarification.
Is there any more questions on Department fifty sewer, the sewer department? Hearing, hearing none, we'll, we'll move on to the next slide. We wanted to go over a few line, a few budget items that many of them affect the different departments. And it's just ones that we wanted to emphasize this year.
May I add, I don't know if Cole mentioned, and I don't, I think you mentioned at the previous meeting, unfortunately, I apologize for not being here. That the tax rate is still going to remain at the thirty six cents per one hundred.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, I just had that to note if it wasn't mentioned previously. Okay, so we just wanted to show the pool revenue to date. It's unfortunate that COVID hit because we made all the repairs to the pool, the bath house, the mural painting. And fiscal year nineteen with audited, we had a pool revenue of thirty five thousand. In fiscal year twenty, we budgeted twenty three thousand nine hundred for pool revenue. Again, hoping with the hundred percent capacity that we'll be able to have in the upcoming fiscal year. The ability to see, sell season passes, hopefully we will see our pool revenue increase.
This next slide is what we were talking about earlier with the utility charges for both the water and sewer utilities. Just to emphasize that the lower usage from all the towns' accounts does. End up having lower revenues for the town. And we anticipate for this coming year that revenues will be down. Based on where we at, where we were at year to date this year. And we're trying to be conservative where we think we may be at fiscal year twenty one and, and twenty two. So. This slide represents the electric budget that we have. Let me pull up that information on my screen. Hold on. Across the board, the, the budget. Expense for the budget is, we're going to raise that by three percent this year for fiscal year twenty two. So you can see that slightly up on the different departments that are affected. Going from fiscal year twenty, twenty one and twenty two, there seems to be an uptick, uptick each year in the electric expense, which, which. We expect. This chart represents where we are as far as town energy expenses, which would be line fifty five twenty two. Electric expenses. This gives you an idea of the total expenses that we've had for the past several years. As you can see, fiscal year nineteen, twenty. It's up slightly from nineteen to twenty. And then fiscal year twenty one, that's actually just six months of the year. You can see where we're at year to date there. But again, energy expenses now are based upon. The invoicing we get from Potomac Edison, the portion we pay UGI Solar. And the refunds that we may get back from excess solar production. So.
Seems this, Commissioner Ritz here, if we can go back to that slide. This slide is very telling. Something that I questioned in years past was the whole. Purpose of our solar field and how much it was going to save the town. I questioned that. And. As you can see from here, it doesn't look like we're really saving too much in energy with the solar field. In fact, we actually are paying more. Just wanted to point that out. I, I know a lot of. Lot of folks were very interested in that solar field and how much it was going to save us. But in reality, it doesn't appear to be.
Well, I mean, you got to take inflation into consideration. You have to take into account that the wastewater treatment plant is continuing and continuing. Continuing to increase its production. So there's a lot more demand out there. As, as, you know, it's, if you take out and Cole will go on to the next, if you go to the next slide, Cole. Not the next one, but the next one, I guess.
Just quickly, this slide represents the energy expenses over the past several years. You can see it's, you can see where they represent each of the years that compared to the, the prior slide. One thing to remember with the solar fields, there are a host of. Fees that come off your soul, that come off your Potomac Edison bills, and they're all listed there. On a typical Potomac Edison bill, if you look at, look at them, they have several different charges. And many of these fees are not listed on those when we have gone to the solar portion. So. I would anticipate that the amount of electric expense would be even higher if we weren't. A part of the solar field. So. But that, those would be estimates. Moving on, a slide concerning insurance and that affects a handful of the different departments. As you can see, this slide shows that the insurance expenses for the town have increased the last couple of years. As we have acquired more assets and generally expenses have, have gone up in this area slightly. This slide has to do with our debt obligations and something I talked about prior. Currently, at the end of fiscal year twenty twenty, we got one, two, three, four, five, six, about seven different. Outstanding debts that we're paying on. Those are all within the water and sewer funds. One thing I want to point out, if you look at the first line item. For the two thousand one Community Development Administration, the principal is listed at fourteen thousand eight hundred. Our payment in this last year of the, of the loan is fifteen thousand two hundred. So that would be the principal plus the interest. That first one listed will be finished as of this fiscal year. So. You can see all the various lanes that we, the town has outstanding and the different payments that are going to be due going forward. The next couple of slides have to do with the depreciation of the water and sewer funds. If you look at the bottom, the. The line in blue, the six million dollar figure amount, that is the net assets of the water fund. And you can see that within the water fund, that has gone down slightly in the last couple of years from year to year. And that's where you actually see when you have revenues not. Covering all your expenses for a given year, you'll see that your net assets are going down slightly. That last line item is the depreciation for the water fund. And you can see that this, this year, well, actually fiscal year twenty is about, it was roughly a hundred and sixty thousand. So. We wanted to show you the, the depreciation figures that go into the water and sewer fund. And you can see that the net asset activity of each of the funds. Again, showing the same thing, the sewer fund, the sewer fund as a fiscal year twenty had about twenty million dollars in net assets. You can see the blue lines that are the taller lines, those are the net assets of the sewer fund. And again, you can see around February fiscal year fourteen and fifteen, that's when we were building the wastewater treatment, the new wastewater treatment plant. And we had received a good bit of revenue those fiscal years. And you can see how that's added directly to our net assets. The net assets are a good indication of how each of the funds are doing. Each year you would hope to have that increase slightly or, or more. But it gives you a trend of where things are as far as each of the individual funds and the, the result of the balance sheet. The last line again is the amount of depreciation that is booked on a yearly basis. So you can see about middle of the chart there where it went up a good bit. That's when the wastewater treatment plant. Went into active use and the depreciation you would need to book each year increased a good bit within that fund. And I'll let Kath go over this one.
All right. So this is the growth projection and taps. And at this time, if you have the water and sewer capital improvement program handy. I'd like to go over that because that goes kind of hand in hand with this. Again, this was something that in discussions with other town managers. Their water and sewer capital improvement program is something that they, they have as well. In discussions with USDA and MDE for funding, this is something they look, look for to see what our cash available is. And what our debt service is and find out, come to find out, there are other grant doors that ask to see this as well. And we'll continue to build on it. Others towns are a little bit more involved. But this is. So this is our basic capital improvement program for water and sewer. So if you look at the warrant, so we did it from fiscal year twenty twenty two to twenty seven.
And, and that's on page thirty of your budget book.
Thank you.
Towards the end, it's pages thirty, thirty one. And thirty two are the new section that goes along with this slide.
So we'll just start with. Page thirty, and you'll see the first section is income. And the cash reserves, which is estimated for fiscal year twenty two through fiscal year twenty seven. And some of the income that we anticipate receiving. We know that we'll receive a USDA pump grant, pump station grant. We anticipate reading, receiving that money probably in fiscal year twenty three. The loan, I think a large portion we'll see in fiscal year twenty two and the remainder in fiscal year twenty three. The state of Maryland grant for the clarifier, we anticipate receiving that money in fiscal year twenty two. And then the tat fees we're estimating in fiscal year twenty two. And these are just the growth projections. This is, this would be if everything happened. And all these developments came to fruition in February and fiscal year twenty two. You'll see in our budget, we were conservative with the number of homes. This would be if everything were to happen and explode in fiscal year twenty two. For fiscal year twenty two, you could see a potential of one million one hundred and eighty three thousand two hundred in tat fees. And that's related to the growth projection chart. In fiscal year twenty two, we anticipate about six homes in South Gate, a potential of twenty six in Brookfield. And right now I have listed at forty nine for Emmett Ridge. I understand that that's changed. To forty eight and it's got a potential to reduce by a couple of lots. We don't know yet. And then we also have potential for the McNair property, which is sixty three taps. So what we've done is just broken it out. And these are all estimates. These are our best guess based off discussions and. Possibilities of all the future developments that could happen in town. And so we've broken out the tat fees that the town could potentially receive each fiscal year. And then we drop down, the next section has to do with debt service. And as Cole went over the different loans that we currently have obligated, you have three loans under the water fund. You currently have a bond and a loan in the sewer fund. And then future will be the loan payment. For the pump station, that's estimated to be a forty year loan, probably starting in somewhere in, in fiscal year twenty three. The next line down will show your cash available. Which increases each fiscal year if, if we continue to receive the tat fees that are projected.
And one way to look at this also is on the income side of things, that's if, if everything goes. Comes in that we think potentially could come in on the debt service side. At least everything as far as except the future pump station loan, those are set fees that we have for the coming years. So. On the, on the income side, it's just, it's kind of a estimate. On the debt service side, those are more of the fixed costs when we're looking at this, at this chart.
Correct. So looking at the growth projection and taps, like your first two are the buildable lots that we currently have, which is thirty two. Between South Gate and Brookfield. And then the future buildable lots that we have between Emmett Ridge to. The Reaver property, the McNair property, the Fraley property and the Trout property. We did add an additional lot available at Bollinger's property. However, there's been absolutely no discussions or, or thoughts. From any party related to that. We just included that in because that is a possible. Lot that would be available in the future if, if they chose to develop it. So you're looking at, if you add them all together, you're looking at needing eight hundred and one taps. And we currently have approximately two hundred and six water taps available. So as these discussions continue to happen with the developers, one thing staff and the board will need to take into consideration is the construction of the Emmett. Emmett Gardens Water Treatment Plant and where the responsibility lies on having that constructed. And developers contributions. But I think this is important for everybody to kind of keep in mind and see where we at with the future going forward. Within the next three, five, ten years. within the next three, five, 10 years. On page 31, I highlighted in fiscal year 22, which we already went over, the system upgrade projects that we anticipate related to water. Again, the water clarifier at 400,000. Right now, we're only spending about 25,000 for North Seaton and DePaul Street Waterline for the engineering and environmental reports. The digital plant upgrade, each year we budget 25,000 for water meter replacements. At the time, the Emmett Gardens water plant was designed, it was estimated to be $3.8 million. However, I'm sure that's probably upwards of four and a half million now. It would have to be redesigned. The wastewater system, we talked about the recycling pump, the monitoring system, which we will try to get a grant for, the influent composite sampler, the Creamery Road pump station, the town's portion of it. I'd anticipate the town having to contribute all of their monies within this fiscal year. The multi-purpose vehicle we talked about, which we will submit for a grant, and the 100,000 for the inflow and infiltration, which is your sewer relining. Down below, you'll see our surplus or deficit, everything is in a surplus. And then I highlighted the three projects, future projects that we anticipate. North Seaton and Waterline, DePaul Street Waterline, which we'll probably submit for grant funding this fiscal year 22. And then the Emmett Gardens water plant. And page 32 is just the growth projections that we went over.
So just to jump in on that for a second, for our purposes, as we're looking at the growth projection and taps screen, the the real versus the hypothetical, we really have to keep that in mind because some of those properties, there are a lot of variables in that equation, including the possibility of annexation. Within town, there would be potentially the need to change zoning. So I really don't want anyone jumping to conclusions that this is, that any of this is a done deal and that there's a process that by law we absolutely have to follow that allows for public input throughout the process. And I know we're focusing on the budget piece, but I just want, you know, our board, our mayor, our staff, and our community to understand that, you know, these are hypotheticals that we're dealing in, this is nothing in concrete. So just so we have that.
That's, you are correct. That it is each a process, but as we know, we're already in the middle of Emmett Ridge too. And there are others that have been in some serious discussions. So, but you're absolutely right with the annexation process. And, but I want everybody to be aware that this is, if you, like Cole said, if you did 100%, if everything were to come in, this is where you're sitting.
Thank you, that's appreciated, it is.
And this is just kind of a static look at things too. If the town gets bigger, there would probably be expenses related to that that aren't listed here also. So just to keep that in mind. Is there any other questions concerning the Water and Sewer Capital Improvement Program section? Moving on, we're going to look at some of the projects that's been completed this fiscal year.
All right, so we just, we just wanted to highlight some of the things that were approved in fiscal year 22. Some of the projects we completed, we completed a recycle pump upgrade. We completed the Well Wizard. And then this is what I was mentioning, the monitoring upgrade at the water plant. These are related to controlling the amount of pH. In years prior, staff would have to pretty much get the calculations off of the flows, they would have to hand calculate it and estimate what's needed. These, as you can see here, they automatically add the soda ash. So it takes any human error or any human having, you know, having to estimate it. So that's where we're seeing the monies saved on chemicals and we are always spot on with our pH now. We completed the track road water line project as well as we finally completed the new garage at the wastewater treatment plant. We did the Creekside Drive water line. And then in the vehicles, the only vehicles we purchased in fiscal year 21 were the new turf tigers. The contractor was able to complete the new sidewalk on West Lincoln in the area of the pool in Christ Community Church. Phase three of the wayside exhibits were completed. I know there was a grand opening of the bandstand renovation that was just completed last week or the week before. That was done with grant funding. Small picnic pavilions are in the process of being completed. Do we know estimated when they're going to be done, Matty? Tomorrow, so they should be completed tomorrow. Again, that was grant funding. Park recycling bins were purchased out of a grant that Zach was able to obtain. The dead ash tree removal as we do each year to keep up with the health of our forest. In the town meeting area here, we were able to install new HD cameras and a new sound system. The contractor and state finally completed the new flat run bridge on East Main Street this fiscal year.
Yay.
Yes, the sewer relining, again, we we completed that one, I believe that was out on West Main. We recertified for the third year in a row as a Tree City USA town. Community legacy, which has been ongoing for many, many years. This is just one example of a before and after project. Two businesses that staff assisted with, with the new building and Insurance Brokers of Maryland and then the Dunkin' Donuts. Town events last year unfortunately were kind of curbed because of COVID, but we still held a national night out. We, farmers market. Arbor Day tree planting, we had only one pool party due to COVID towards the end of the season. The Disc Golf Grand Opening, they've had a couple of tournaments out there. I know they've donated some of their proceeds to the food bank, Matty, to the food bank. The Pool House ribbon cutting, the mural in the bath house itself. The Dunkin' Donuts groundbreaking and the ground opening. Here's some highlighted grants that we, that staff applied for in 2021. You had the Wayside Exhibits, the community park and pavilions. We did not receive funding for picnic table replacements in our pavilions, nor did we receive for the message centers. The community legacy for 50,000. Through DHCD, we did not receive community legacy money for the curb ramps. However, we did receive the monies through CDBG in the amount of 685,000. We had a grant for cleanup and green up, trash containers in Arbor Day. And then the Silo Hill Stormwater Basin through the Chesapeake Bay Trust. I just, I can't say enough about our staff who goes out and finds these grants so that we can keep moving forward and getting a lot of these projects funded through grants. As you know, a small town with a small budget, we try to accomplish a lot. And these grants are a pivotal part of our day-to-day operations. And Matty and Zach do an outstanding job in getting their grants so that we can keep moving forward. And then I just, another shout out to Ms. Shaw on the PowerPoint. She does a fantastic job each year getting this PowerPoint done and taking the numbers that Cole and I throw at her and putting it into an excellent PowerPoint. And staff does a remarkable job getting this budget together.
They absolutely do. I want to thank the staff, the presentation, all the hard work they've done. This is just a spectacular. We're on this side of a pandemic and we got all this done the last year. It's a tribute to the staff and the commissioners and our residents here to pull and push this thing through and now we are where we are and want to thank everybody.
Does anyone have any additional questions concerning the fiscal year 22 proposed budget presentation?
So unfortunately, with the change in the sheriff's office contract, Cole and I will have to take back and adjust the numbers in the general fund and probably adjust numbers in Fund II to cover the priority projects for fiscal year 22 and bring that back to the board in June. If there are any follow-up questions or concerns about the budget, please let myself and Cole know as soon as possible with a two-week turnaround if we have to make any other adjustments.
So for clarification regarding process, are we staying put for the moment until we hear the modifications related to the deputy expense? Is that accurate?
Yes, I'd feel more comfortable bringing it back to you at the June 7th meeting because I'm not exactly sure where to make the adjustment. I need to sit and look at the numbers in Fund II and then I can bring that back to you. With that being said, the only thing you'll probably see if everybody is okay with going forward is the change to the sheriff's office contract and then some additional adjustments in Fund II where some line items can be adjusted to cover the expenses that we need.
Okay, so I'll turn to the board with the recommendation of the town manager. Is, just to hear it individually, are we okay with the process as it stands, as it's recommended at the moment by staff regarding that modification?
Yes.
Great, okay. Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Burns?
Yes.
Thank you. And Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Terrific. Okay, thank you all. So Ms. Willis, will that suffice for direction to continue with the process?
Yes, thank you.
Sure, thank you. Okay, so at this time, my belief is we're going to turn to setting the agenda for that first June meeting.
Right, so I can list out what was currently already approved. And then I had a few additional things that came up tonight and then so what I have is the review and approval of the fiscal year 22 town budget for consideration. Award the ADA sidewalk curb ramp project contract for consideration. Approval of the Irish Town Road Transfer Memorandum of Understanding with Frederick County and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement on behalf of the town for consideration.
And we talked transfer, for clarification, we're talking about the transfer of the ownership of the road to the town, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Number four would be approval of the Brookfield lots 1 through 19, Irish Town Road projects. Right away, temporary grading easement and public works agreements and authorize the mayor to sign the agreements on behalf of the town for consideration. Number five would be the approval of bid to construct two small pavilions in the E Eugene Myers Community Park near the bandstand for consideration. Number six would be an add-on item, would be the approval of Resolution 202103R authorizing Mayor Briggs and the town manager to file an application for federal assistance with the USDA Rural Development for Consideration. This would be the grant that I mentioned for the two vehicles and the monitoring equipment for the wastewater treatment plant. For administrative business, I would have a proclamation honoring Richard Boyd, manager of Jubilee Foods for his service to the community for consideration. Having a free pool day on Heritage Day, June, what's the date? June 26, 2021. Administrative business for consideration. Allowing I don't know how to word it, allowing masks to not be worn inside the bath house at the community pool. I guess that's to word it that way. Then I have two consent agendas. The reappointment of Wendy Walsh, Wayne Slaughter, Tricia Shepherd, Will Shepherd, and Conrad Weaver to the Citizens Advisory Committee. An appointment of Kevin Hagan as an alternate to the Planning Commission. This would be all for June 7th. And then I also have, if you want them, June 21st agenda items. Yes?
Okay, so board, is there a motion to accept? Let's go with the agenda first. Is there a motion to accept the agenda as presented?
I make them.
Okay, is there a second for the motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you, sir. Motion has been made by Commissioner Sweeney, seconded by Commissioner Burns. Is there any further discussion?
Just to clarify, Commissioner Davis, was there anything else that you were considering adding?
Yeah, I really wanted to talk about the North Gate Park, but it seems like we're overloaded. Maybe we can do that at the second meeting.
Can I add that, Commissioner Davis, can I add that as a discussion item for June 21st?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion?
I guess my only discussion point at this time, before we vote on this, you know, I know it's set to be virtual and June 21st is set to be virtual. And we're already having things lifted here in the state. Seems like things might be going that way in the county. I know the county owns the building. I think given the circumstances of how things are getting a little bit more lenient, probably a majority of people in this call have received their second vaccine dose. I don't see why we're still doing this virtually. And if the county has a problem with it, with us holding our meetings at the town office, perhaps we could utilize Building 22, 22 East Main Street, like old school, old school meetings. And if it's a safety issue and people are still apprehensive, I think we're at that point now where everything's starting to become more lax and the vaccines are all in place and everything, so.
So if I can clarify, the county executive never weighed in on us having open meetings. I know there are some municipalities that are just having their commissioners come back in and they are kind of setting it where you do what you feel comfortable doing. So for example, I know one municipality has a few commissioners that come in and a few commissioners still attend virtually. And it's the same way with their staff to what they feel comfortable doing. So I mean, I defer that to the board and to the mayor, but that's, I just wanted to clarify that she's never said anything about us not having our meetings.
Okay.
This is what we're doing. So I mean, Mr. Sweeney's there, the mayor is there, staff is there.
And there's Plexiglas in place in between everyone.
Yeah, I've been saying that for weeks, that Plexiglas has been up, but we're, you know, we're not utilizing it. I think, I'm at the point now where it's, I'm almost to where it's enough's enough. I'm ready to go back to meetings in person. It is a lot easier. I think we've done a fine job virtually this past, over this past year, but we've had some technical glitches and everything, so getting back on track, you know, I'm looking forward to it in everything, including town meetings.
I do have one question too.
Okay, so we're still in comment for the motion, yes, Mr. Sweeney?
This is after the motion, I can ask the question after.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Any other comments related to the motion related to the agenda?
Would it be safe at this time to include as part of the agenda to have the meeting in person at the town office?
If I may, may I say something?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, please.
Just as, we still have a
Just as, we still have a staff to protect and, uh, under HIPAA, there are some staff members who have not gotten a shot. We, we've got a plan. We want to roll out to opening the office, uh, if, uh, for the public. And we want to, let's just slowly roll this thing out a little bit and, uh, so we can manage it. And, uh. We never know what we're going to come back into the fall when we all go back inside and what'll happen and, uh. I, I, I just want to keep it. The staff protected and under HIPAA, we don't have to identify anybody that doesn't want a shot and, uh. Just kind of. We're doing all right right now. This, just tap the brakes here. We, let's get the budget done. And then we'll look into the next thing after that. I, I was feeling that we should have at the latest by Labor Day. Have everything straightened out and the town will be back to open up full-time. But we want to roll into that a little bit over the summer. We, like, we got two people out now who are. Who are questionable on, uh, on positive testing and. And the impact that on the staff is, is, is incredible, uh, with a small staff, so. We, we have to run. Make sure the trades are on time. And if you look at this budget, the presentation here, it's spectacular involvement from our staff to get this to this point through this last year.
And I'm not here to discredit the staff. I think they did a fine job with the budget. I understand Mr. Mayor's, uh, concern over protecting staff from any potential. Infections. However, town meetings do not involve hundred percent of town staff being at the town office. Just saying, going forward, I think the best course of action would be for the commissioners and, um. Key staff and, and Mr. Mayor to start, start going in person before opening the office up to the public. I can understand that concern. It's just that with every, everything going on right now. Restrictions being lifted and a vast majority, even if there are individuals at the office who have declined the vaccination. Most people have received it and therefore there's a sense of safety.
Right, right now, right now, we have four people from the staff in here. That's half of our staff that's here.
So here's a thought. Um, I, I'm still trying to move toward the vote. Mr. Rich, let me suggest this. We can discuss this as an administrative business item. In, in our next meeting. And I believe the outcome, we, we still might find ourselves in a position where we're not able to, you know. See all parties on hand perhaps, but, uh, it would be a step forward if we just were to have a, an open discussion about this. And it would be just a question, I think arguably of, of what the numbers say and best practices and. Admittedly, the policy of the county isn't aligned with the state at the moment, but that can change. Hopefully it does shortly, but in the meantime. The, the building does belong to the county, so we're, we're kind of. At their mercy in a way. However, as, as Ms. Willis offered, uh, we've never been directed that we can, you know, we are absolutely forbidden to be there. Okay, uh, regarding an open meeting. So we, we might move toward that. I mean, you know, we, but I guess what I'm saying is. Would that satisfy your specific concern? So we can talk about that at the start of our next meeting, which is all of two weeks away. And then, you know, we can make it an actionable item potentially at the second meeting of the month.
Sure. I, I don't want to hold this process up anymore. I think that, that's, that's a reasonable.
So I hope that.
I like it. No, I'm good. I'm good to go. No, no further explanation needed.
Thank you. Okay. So at this time, I'll call the vote.
Commissioner Donald, if you want to add that as an administrative item, what, um.
Well, right, right now, we're just at the, we're just doing the agenda. We're, we're not, we haven't gotten to administrative business yet because I was anticipating this.
Oh, okay.
Okay, um, so. All in favor of accepting the agenda as, as proposed, uh, please say aye.
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 Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries five to zero. Now we're going to turn to administrative business. Ms. Willis, are you looking for language to name it or do you have something in mind? I don't want to, um, hinder the process?
I was just thinking maybe, um, discussion related to. Town commissioner or commissioner, or board town meetings or, or something related to that.
How about discussion related to opening town office for town meetings?
Are you talking about opening the town meeting for the public or just for the commissioners? Or you just want to discuss it in general?
I'd say in general, where we would discuss both of those items. Like, I, I would think maybe an outcome could be that we would put a formal letter together requesting the county to open the building. I mean, that, that would be a possible outcome. Or not.
Okay.
Okay, so does that, does that give you sufficient language for it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. All right, so now we turn to the next item. Is there a motion to accept the administrative business? For the June seventh, twenty twenty-one town meeting. As presented and modified.
I'll make a motion to accept that as presented and modified.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second for Commissioner Rich's motion?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Burns. Motion's been made by Commissioner Rich, seconded by Commissioner Burns. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Okay, I believe the motion carries five to zero. Mr. Sweeney, you voted aye. Is that correct, sir?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Therefore, there are no nays. Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. I'm sorry, I just didn't hear you. Okay, so, um, does that satisfy our direction for our next meeting, Ms. Willis?
No, you have two consent items.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, yes, yes. Pardon me. Thank you, thank you. Okay, all in favor of accepting the consent agenda as presented, please say aye.
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 And there we go. All right, sort of leapfrog there. My apologies. Okay. Ms. Willis, are we okay to move forward?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, uh, any final comment from staff?
No.
Any final comment from the board? Any final comment from the mayor?
Are you going to do June twenty-first meeting?
I'm sorry?
Are you going to do the agenda for June twenty-first?
Um, I, if, if you would like, yes.
Yes, I would.
Okay. So. To the commissioners, can we accept the whole thing in one shot? Does anybody have any issue if we do that before we?
I like that idea.
I think, I, I think the problem is we haven't set the June twenty-seventh agenda yet is what Ms. Bowles is trying to get at. There are still items that need to be added and I think that's what we're, we're overstepping and jumping ahead without anything being added to it yet.
Correct, correct. I just want to make sure process-wise we're expedient. Okay, so Ms. Willis, yes, for the agenda.
All right, so for the June twenty-first agenda. For administrative business, I have the approval of the sheriff's office contract, contract for fiscal year twenty-two. For discussion. The status of North Gate Park. Does that cover what you're looking for, Commissioner Davis? I don't.
Yes.
Okay, so for discussion, uh, status of North Gate Park. And then to, moving to agenda items. Impact fee and park rec fee and lieu study presentation. Number two, public hearing and approval of ordinance twenty-one dash oh five for consideration. Number three, public hearing and approval of ordinance twenty-one dash oh six for consideration. Number four, approval of policy P twenty-one dash oh two. Park recreation and open space fee and lieu for consideration. Approval of ordinance twenty-one dash oh eight, update to chapter three point oh eight, impact fees for consideration. And number six. Approval of resolution twenty-one dash oh two R. Community legacy facade improvement grant submittal authorization for consideration. And that's everything.
There's many things. All right. Okay, and just curiously, do we anticipate anything in the offing between now and then to add to the agenda to that, uh, June twenty-first agenda?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I'm, okay, sorry. Do we anticipate any modifications to this agenda at the first June meeting?
I certainly hope not. I don't believe so.
I, I guess the only thing we could potentially would be if we don't pass the budget at the June seventh meeting.
That's true.
That's correct. And we could add that after.
Yes.
After the June seventh meeting if it.
I mean, I got my fingers crossed, but, uh, you never know.
We all do. Very good. Okay, so is there a motion to accept the June? Trying to get the correct date. Twenty-first town meeting agenda as presented.
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda for the June twenty-first town meeting as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second for the motion?
One second.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Rich, seconded by Commissioner Davis. Did I hear that correctly?
Sweeney.
I'm sorry, thank you, Commissioner Sweeney. Sorry, Mr. Sweeney. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. The motion carries five to zero. We move forward. Is there a motion to close the meeting?
So move.
Thank you. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Rich, seconded by Commissioner Sweeney. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Very good. The motion carries five to zero. Uh, the meeting concludes at nine thirty-three PM on May seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. Staff, thank you very much for your presentation. It's greatly appreciated. Board, Mr. Mayor, thank you also for your contributions tonight. And with that, we conclude our town meeting.